No, this is the voting area on this side.
I unmuted it.
Huh?
I unmuted it.
Okay, so we're ready.
Two minutes.
What does that mean? This is what that is, right? These microphones? Are they working the last few times?
I can usually hear it okay. I mean, if we need them.
Yeah. No matter what, we hear things about volume and whatnot.
Well, it's people in the audience, too, that they can't hear.
That's what, yeah, that was one of the comments.
Because we don't make them come up.
I thought about getting a wireless microphone to pass around, but I was afraid it might fly.
You're trying to make them do it well.
Yeah.
Go ahead, John, act like Vanna.
Yeah.
It says 6:30 on here.
Okay, we'll call a meeting to order. Let's pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approve the minutes of the August 19th meeting, Sluggings Meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from August 19th.
Second.
Envy, favor. And then make a motion to two warrant four paper warrants, August 20th, August 27th. Includes FEMA reserve account expenditures.
I'll second.
Envy, favor. August 10th report.
No updates since the last update, but we do have a meeting Monday in Buckfield at 7:30, and that will be when we'll probably want to come to reviewing the sixth grade moving off of to the high school.
What's, I see they're putting together that third mobile. What's that going to be used for?
They decided for that, because it wasn't down there for storage.
And the other thing is, they said they're going to be putting new, more permanent, better looking skirting around with two existing. When's that happening?
Yeah, I'll check. It's not really good look.
Okay. Road Commissioners Report.
Go for it.
All right. We have been working on Darrington Road, Davenport Road, and Gording Road, and it should be done this week. Then we'll have estimates to pave Darrington Road Hills and Davenport Road Hills for Monday night's road committee meeting. They need to replace the culvert on Hermit Lane and have been putting fill in the turnaround on Hermit Lane to make it easier to turn around for plow drivers. They will be moving to Lavador Pond Road and Town Farm Road FEMA sites next. Roadside mowing has been completed for the year, and the paving of Pratt Hill Road is planned for the last week of September or the first week of October.
So Kathy?
Yes?
I got a phone call from Ben about that turnaround on Hermit Lane. Would you know what the deal is with that?
Uh...
How do we know whose land it is?
It's the guy in George, what's his last name, Dave?
But that's not the guy that had the issue.
No, it's just the banana.
Yeah, so...
We have got permission from him to do this turnaround from George.
Yep.
He's the one that bought Dave's place up there.
Yep.
He owns the land. So he's given Ben permission to even cut some trees to make it bigger. He wants to make it like a 50 by 50. And he's got to draw up a map, and the land is sort of right up in Eastman. He said he'd sign it.
Okay. There was a question of a trailer in the way, though. Is that going to take care of this issue?
It's still there.
Ben wants him to move the trailer. It's on Leslie and Darrell's land.
It's on the roadway, right?
Yeah.
I have photos.
So he's going to ask me if you move it.
Who's, he's going to ask who to move it?
Darrell.
Who's going to ask him?
Ben.
Okay. Because Ben said that, all right, let's see how it goes.
Yeah. He's going to ask me if you move it back.
Because I think he's already asked him, and it didn't turn out good. So I guess my question is, back to my original question, how do we know, how do we prove that it's on town land if we need to prove that? Do we have to hire a survey to do this, or...
So many feet, isn't it, in the middle of the...
I don't know where the trailer is, but my side has been surveyed, so it's easy to tell where the 50 foot right away.
So are we sure it's 50 feet on that road?
Not me personally, I don't know.
Even if it's 30... Even if it's 33 feet, it's still on the roadway.
Is, does anybody know the trailer where it's sitting now? Is it a problem?
I've got to set up one.
Because I, right now, it's not on the road, from what I can see. At least when I went up there Saturday.
It's in the road right away.
Oh, right, road right away, okay.
Yeah. And that's, even if it's a two-rod road, it's still on the roadway, which we don't, I don't think we have any in there. If it's a three-rod road, it's completely on the roadway. He had the fresh surveying done there, Dave did.
Yeah.
And I measured it this morning, 49 and a half feet is eight feet past the trailer.
Okay.
And the school bus, when I was a kid, used to drive in there, right where that trailer was sitting, back in the turnaround.
Oh.
You know, it's been a little while, but...
Yeah, that's why I was questioning it, because even though it's off to the other side of the turnaround, you still have to jog your hand, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so I guess I'll wait to hear.
Last year, he just plowed out and then backed into the driveway.
Yeah, that's what he told me.
Constable Report.
Very quiet, good to hear. So thank you, everybody, for not even trying to set stuff on fire.
Hey, I got one question for you, and I don't know if you can legally do it or not, but I'm going to ask you. If you leave Pine Shores and take a left towards Canton, the second house on the right has got a child holding a slow sign and a cone on the other. Do you have the authority to tell them to move that out of the road? Because I'm whacking my mirrors on that when I meet someone. What do I need to call the sheriff to have them do it?
I would call the sheriff.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because it keeps encroaching more and more on the road.
You don't want it.
CEO Report.
Not this week.
Nothing. ACO Report. I hear there's no place whatsoever around the vicinity that they're taking any caps.
You want me to read this, or...
It's four, yes.
That's not really helping. It's just for you guys.
Been busy.
Planning Board Report.
They meet, they meet next week.
Next week?
Yeah, because of the holiday.
Good question.
I have something that I want to talk about related to the planning board and also to the scanning project. Should I talk about it now or wait till open session?
Let's wait till open session. If you go with that, guys.
Does it matter? Me. Ad hoc Planning Committee.
We don't have much to, we don't have much to add, but that also ties into the other thing I was talking about, scanning.
Okay. Audit Committee.
They meet next week?
September 10th.
Yeah, next week. And we actually have enough for Quorum, I believe.
Is it?
Yep, it's three.
Fire Warren Report.
Leanne, I meant to ask you last meeting, did you contact the forest ranger to make sure he was getting the burn permits? I'm reading his review, he said he wasn't getting them.
I, what did I do? I don't know if I emailed or called, I tried, but I didn't get a reply yet. I think I called and left a message.
Good.
Treasurer Report.
I don't have much, 30-day leave notices are going out Thursday. The audit is starting at the end of the month. That's it.
Did you, you told me a while back, or I can say a while back, probably a month ago, that your auditor sold or something?
No, I was wrong.
Okay.
The name was actually Archie's employee. I was thinking it was Audit Employee Sense.
Cemetery Committee Report. Nothing. Solid Waste Committee.
We met, and we talked about what to do next, which is to look into possibilities for saving money for the townspeople, and we want issue service. And we have some ideas for contracts, and we've given ourselves a 90-day deadline.
So I got a little background. I got a contact from Carol Robbins, Sluggings meeting.
Yep.
And they were supposed to open bids last week. They didn't become, so they had to cancel Sluggings meeting, and I see they canceled again this week. But she wants to see if we want to work with them to try to come up with a way to combine, do something to help both towns. So I was going to reach out to her and see if she wanted to come to the next...
Meeting?
Yeah. But I want to check that you guys are first.
Selective meeting or solid waste meeting?
Probably Sluggings meeting first and then the solid waste. I'm not sure what she has in mind. I do know they have a workshop at the transfer station this week, but it's at like 10:00 AM in the morning, so I don't know what that's about or if we can attend. But if you want, I'll reach out to her for the next meeting if she's available.
Yep. When was they having that workshop?
I have to go back and look at their town website, but I think it was this week. I want to say it was Thursday at 10:00. And I don't know what they're, they put out the bid. She wasn't real clear, but it wasn't curbside, it was something to do with transfer station.
Or they have to hire a contractor to remove them.
Right.
Usually it's Archie's.
But it was something, I don't know, it wasn't just a new contractor, it was something, more options. There was, she had, she told me that Cassell had given them a few options of things they could do, but she didn't tell me what those options were.
Okay. Recreation Committee Report.
Dana and planning beach day, our afternoon, 24th August. No one showed up. We are planning, we're scheduled to do hunter safety here as well as all of you guys approved these programs coming up. We had scheduled another beach day for September, but I don't know if she's going to continue.
Good.
Just the portico body is going to be removed soon in the buoys and stuff, so keep that in mind. Just the portico body is going to be removed soon in the buoys and stuff, so keep that in mind.
When, when are you doing that, John? I started at that school, I got to get to...
I'm going to take you around to the portico body zone, which hopefully this means we're against culture.
Okay.
What was the beach days event supposed to be? I didn't quite get that.
I'm not sure. It was going to be a Dana and planning.
Oh.
I was on the beach day.
Gotcha.
But it was an after move back to the east.
Oh, okay.
Open session, Peggy.
Yes, well, I don't know if the other two Sluggors members know, but last year we were trying to do a scanning project, and we did a, we applied for a grant to the state of Maine, and the scanning project was going to involve the planning board records, which are not very well organized in that clause, and the permit file. And we got turned down for the grant, we did not get the grant. And the planning board asked to maybe have, buy a scanner for the planning board, but that was not approved in the budget. So I have worked on a lot on trying to digitalize stuff. The planning board records have been digitalized the last three and a half years and organized. And plus, I put a lot of effort into organizing all the educational materials onto Google Drive that made available to people. We had the technical person, the computer technical person come talk to the planning board about trying to get things on a website, when we found out that the hybrid website cannot handle a large amount of data because each page would take too long to load. So there was that limit, and we can't go through that. And I was just thinking recently that, oh, and I was proposing to do a Google, a Google Workspace, which has all these...
Not on the road. From what I can see. At least when I went up there Saturday.
It's in the road right away.
Oh, right, road right away, okay.
Yeah. And that's even if it's a two-road road, it's still on the roadway, which we don't, I don't think we have any in them. If it's a three-road road, it's completely on the way. He has a fresh surveying down there, did he?
Yeah.
Yes.
And I measured it this morning, forty-nine and a half feet is eight feet past the trailer.
Okay.
And, and the school bus, when I was a kid, used to drive in there, right where that trailer was sitting, back in the turnaround.
Oh.
You know, it's been a little while, but.
Yeah, that's why I was questioning it, because even though it's off to the other side of the turnaround, you still have to jog your hand, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so I guess I'll wait to hear.
Last year, he just plowed out and then backed into the driveway.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's what he told me. Okay.
Constable report.
Very quiet, good to hear. So thank you, everybody, for not even trying to set stuff on fire.
Hmm.
Hey, I got one question for you, and I don't know if you can legally do it or not, but I'm gonna ask you. If you leave Pine Shores and take a left towards Canton, the second house on the right has got a child holding a slow sign and a cone on the other. Do you have the authority to tell them to move that out of the road? Because I'm whacking my mirrors on that when I meet someone. What do I need to call the sheriff to have them do it?
I would call the sheriff.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because it keeps encroaching more and more on the road.
You don't want it. You don't want it.
Yeah. C E O report.
Not this week.
Nothing. A C O report. Got a few. They hear there's no place whatsoever around. The vicinity is, they're taking any caps.
You want me to read this or?
No, it's four, yes.
Maybe it's four. No, that's not really helping.
Oh, right.
It's just for you guys.
Been busy.
Planning Board report.
They meet, they meet next week.
Next week?
Yeah, because of the holiday.
Good question.
I have something that I want to talk about related to the planning board and also to the scanning project. Should I talk about it now or wait till open session?
Uh, let's wait till open session. If you go with that, guys.
Doesn't matter.
Good.
Ad hoc planning committee.
We don't have much to, we don't have much to add, but that also ties into the other thing I was talking about scanning.
Okay. Audit committee.
We meet next week?
September tenth.
Yeah, next week. And we actually have enough for Quorum, I believe.
Is it?
Yep, it's three.
Fire one. Four, nothing. After dry out.
Hey, Leanne, I meant to ask you last meeting, did you contact the forest ranger to make sure he was getting the burn permits? I'm reading his review, he said he wasn't getting none.
I, what did I do? I don't know if I emailed or called, I tried, but I didn't get a reply yet.
No luck.
I think I called and left a message.
Good.
Treasure report. I don't have much, thirty daily notices going out Thursday. The audit is starting at the end of the month. That's it.
Did you, you told me a while back, or I'd say a while back, probably a month ago, that your auditor sold or something?
No, I was wrong.
Okay.
It's, the name was actually Archie's employee, I was thinking it was audit employee sounds.
Cemetery committee report. Nothing. Solid waste committee.
We met. And we talked about, um, what to do next, which is to look into possibilities for saving money for the townspeople. And we want issue service. And we have some ideas for contacts, and we've given ourselves a ninety-day deadline.
So, I got a little background, I got a contact from Carol Robbins, Sluggins.
Yep, yep.
And they were supposed to open bids last week, they didn't be quorummed, so they had to cancel Sluggins' meeting, I see they canceled again this week. But she wants to see if we want to work with them to try to come up with a way to combine, do something to help both towns. So, um, I was gonna reach out to her and see if she wanted to come to the next, um.
Meeting?
Yeah. But I want to check with you guys first.
Selective meeting or solid waste meeting?
Probably Sluggins' meeting first and then the solid waste. I'm not sure what she has in mind, um, I do know they have a workshop at the transfer station this week. But it's at like ten AM in the morning, so I don't know what that's about, um, or if we can attend. If you want, I'll reach out to her for the next meeting if she's available.
Yep, when was they having that workshop?
I'd have to go back and work it there.
Okay.
Their town website, but I think it was this week, I want to say it was Thursday at ten. And I don't know what they're, they put out the bid, she wasn't real clear, but, but it wasn't curbside, it was something to do with transfer station.
Well, they have to hire a contractor to remove the, we use the S R Gs.
But it was something, I, I don't know, it wasn't just a new contractor, it was something, more options, there was a, she had, she told me that Cassella had given them a few options of things they could do, but she didn't tell me what those options were.
Okay. Recreation committee report.
Dana planning beach day, our afternoon, twenty-fourth August, um, no one showed up. We are planning, we scheduled to do hunter safety here as well as all of you guys approve. These, so that coming up, we had scheduled another beach day for September, but I don't know if she's going to.
Good, Leanne.
Just the porta potty is going to be removed soon in the buoys and stuff, so keep that in mind.
When, when are you doing that job? I started at that school, I gotta get to it.
I'm gonna take it where I lost the porta potty zone, which hopefully this may be important against culture.
Good.
What was the beach days event supposed to be? I didn't quite get that.
I'm not sure, um, it was the Dana head plan.
Oh. Gotcha.
But it was an afternoon activity, it's designed for children.
Oh, okay.
Open session, Peggy.
Yes, well, um, I don't know if the other two Sluggin Board members know, but last year we were trying to do a scanning project, and we did a, um, we applied for a grant to the state of Maine, and the scanning project was going to involve the planning board records, which are not very well organized in that clause, and the, um, permit file. And, uh, we got turned down for the, uh, grant, we did not get the grant. And, uh, then the planning board asked to maybe have, buy a scanner for the planning board, but that was not approved in the budget. So, uh, I have worked on a lot on trying to digitalize stuff. The planning board records have been digitalized the last three and a half years and organized. And plus, I put a lot of effort into organizing all the educational materials onto Google Drive that made available to people. We had the, uh, technical person, the computer technical person, come talk to the planning board about trying to get things on a website, when we found out that the Hartford website cannot handle a large amount of data because each page would take too long to load. So there was that limit, and we can't go through that. And I was just thinking recently that, uh, when I was proposing to do a Google, a Google, um, workspace, which has all these different components that you can do, that the town can buy for one, for one, um, um, one person for like twenty dollars a month. But there was no consensus that we're going to move in that direction. So I'm just wondering if, if I personally buy the scanner to do the, the material, because I found out for seven hundred dollars, I can buy a scanner that will do forty-five pages a minute, and from the numbers I have from last year, it would be estimated that it would take like eighteen hours of work to do the actual scanning at the rate, because we have like fifty thousand pages combined with the permits and the, um, the, uh, what, I mean, the, uh, planning board stuff to get, uh, digitalized. Although that doesn't include the time of preparation, and then later probably the larger project would be organized.
I was just gonna ask that, with the organization, that's what I was just gonna ask, okay.
Yeah, so that's also the other stuff. And then I, I found out how many, how much storage space should we need for that? And you would probably, you could be able to use just the plain old Google Drive that Leanne has available on the town computer for at the most, it'd be a dollar ninety-nine a month, and you would probably not even need, you probably only, you'll use the free fifteen gigabytes that come with the standard Google Drive. So I'm wondering if the Sluggin Board would be in favor of, all of the thing would be Leanne making a folder on the Google Drive that says, to begin with, planning board, and give, give me or whoever else want to be involved in this project, just to that one folder, the editor, uh, capability, so we can scan things and organize them on the town computer. They wouldn't be publicly available, but they'd be, um, archived in a digital form, so we can start this whole process with the town.
You can't make decisions in open session?
No. Can you?
Absolutely.
Present, can you present that to the whole planning board?
I have a handout about it, and I have all the information that I gathered. I have one page handout of the, um, the calculations for the number of files and the cost, and the other one is the detailed, you know, all the calculations and what the record manager said last year, how many pages and how much space would be involved.
Can you present that to the whole planning board next Monday?
Yeah.
And we'll make sure, we'll put it on the agenda for next meeting?
Right, but I, I kind of need the Sluggin Board's input, are they, would they be on board with the idea of using a Google Drive that the town already has connected to the town computer? We didn't, we didn't approach through that avenue before.
I just have to be careful, because this is town equipment, I'm, I'm the one who is responsible for it, so I don't know. We usually talk to Jaylene about access and any.
Yeah, but you can.
All, all it means is that you give each file on the Google Drive, you can give the access to different people as just a read-only, or as an editor, or, or, you know. I mean, other people are familiar with this process, and everything is transferred electronically, so there's no hands-on touch on your equipment at all, it's like e-mail and attachments.
Yeah, right.
Software.
That's the same risk.
What's that?
I said the software, not just the hardware.
But I think it would be its own separate folder that you would create.
Right.
And then share that access to.
Right, and then I wouldn't, and whoever would get access to that whole, we wouldn't have access to anything else on that Google Drive on that computer.
Right, right. So let's, let's do that, because we can't really say yes or no, so present it to the planning board Monday.
Okay, well, I would, I hope that you could find out through the.
And put it on the agenda.
Reasonable avenue to do to approach this.
Mm-hmm. Anything else, Lenny?
Yeah, I was wondering, uh, as in terms of the calendar on the Hartford Town webpage. I understand that some events are private, but could there be an indication, private event, and how much time, so that people, it's easier to plan other things? I know they're on the calendar in the office, but why wouldn't they be on the website?
Yeah, can, is that something?
Yeah, but no one should assume that they can use the hall on any day.
No.
Well, I know, but.
There's no range of time, right, that you could plan ahead and then make contact.
Yeah, but someone could come in and rent the hall for tomorrow. I'm not gonna.
What is, what's the problem? You could just say five in the end and walk off.
Yeah, but what she's saying is, you might. Well.
Why is there a meeting?
Yeah, because a meeting is scheduled, how could they rent the hall?
I'm sorry?
If there's a meeting scheduled, say, say someone scheduled a meeting today.
Yeah.
For next Tuesday. You're not gonna rent the hall if someone wants to on that Tuesday.
Right.
So I don't understand what you're saying, so someone can rent, you said someone could walk in and rent the hall tomorrow, what, what do you mean by that?
I think she means if she puts it on the website.
Right, so why can't, we don't have to put the person's name, just private event, five to seven.
Just.
That way, and that, because we ran into the issue a few, a month ago with the road committee, where we looked at the town calendar, and there was nothing on the town calendar. And that's when you told me that, well, you gotta be careful of that, because there's the calendar of the town office that has private events in it, why can't those private events come in the town calendar? But like I said, we don't put names, just put private event.
Okay.
Is there a lot of, like, a lot of private events outside?
Not at the moment, but construction's gonna start soon, you know, things like that, you want that on there, construction of all for these three weeks.
Wow, I mean.
We've had, working on that.
They'll be working during the regular hours, all right? No, I'm just saying, if you rent the hall out for, like, your Thanksgiving thing, does that go on the calendar, in, on the town calendar? Okay, so that's, those are the events we're talking about. Not that we'd schedule a meeting on Thanksgiving, but I'm just using that for an example, like, I don't know what else there would be for private events, but.
I'm assuming that people are trying to schedule meetings, but they don't know or feel totally confident.
Of the date of.
Why don't they keep the same day of the week or, you know, of the month, most of the year?
The reason I go that way is you might want a workshop, you might want an accident meeting, like, here's a lot of talk to go, possibly have a meeting, you know, if you're gonna, please look at the calendar while you're in a meeting and say, maybe you could do it this day, and then you can contact the town office. But if you don't have any idea that all of these private events, then it's harder to plan. And there are things besides regularly scheduling.
Yeah, and the road committee's been meeting every week, so.
Unless you want to create a separate calendar where people were on committees so they can, can check it when they're trying to schedule something.
I don't think we need a second calendar. Well, I can see if you guys have a meeting and you want to have a follow-up meeting, and you, it almost makes it difficult to not be able to.
Right.
Schedule it freely if you can't look somewhere.
Well, you can't schedule it, and so you check with me anyway.
Right.
Right, but you can.
Well, tentatively.
Schedule, uh, plan time, and then, then you just have to let everybody know. I don't know what the problem is.
Is there any other?
It's simple to make.
This already came up, because the conference of the planning committee tentatively scheduled a meeting for October eighth, because there was nothing on that date. And although Leanne, if it's true, that it could be scheduled then, I don't know if anybody notified one of them yet.
Um, red committee's at six-thirty.
On October eighth.
Empty, oh, October.
October eighth.
Ad hoc planning committee, I have Dan for six-thirty.
Okay, okay, so they did get in there.
Yeah.
It was only a try, actually, it wasn't gross.
I think, it seems like it's the path of least resistance, if you, if you have five people all, either way, you still would need to follow up with those people to let them know that it's confirmed.
Right, but it's easier than guessing. And then you just say, well, here's five things we can think about.
Yep, right.
I don't see what the issue is.
Peggy.
Lauren Carson is planning a, uh, Fourth of July event for the county's 250th anniversary, next Fourth of July, here in Hartford. Um, she'll be at the recreation committee's meeting September eighth, it's six-thirty, if anyone wants to call, over help with it, for come and talk about it.
So, so next Monday?
And next Monday's September eighth.
So that's saying that the planning board, you're gonna be at it?
No, 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 so.
No, planning board's next week.
You'll have to be in the kitchen?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, she'll be in the kitchen.
Okay.
Leanne?
Um, I was wondering, um, if we have any new information about the gentleman who came and was talking about starting.
I've heard that.
I've heard everything.
Okay, and, uh, Archie's, weren't they gonna have Archie's rep here?
We requested it.
Yeah, well, my trash has been picked up for the, the train's already gone in the afternoon. So I took it after ten this morning, and saw that the neighbors is empty. So I called Archie's and said, are you down with Main Street and Hartford? And the guy who answered said, I don't know where Main Street and Hartford is, but we're picking up tomorrow because of the holiday. So I put it on a couple of Facebook sites, and then people informed that their trash had been picked up. So we still don't have.
That's coming up on the agenda, so.
Oh, okay, okay. Swatted the attention, yeah. It wasn't easy.
Is there anything else? Peggy?
To the, to the ad hoc planning committee, can we add the names of, uh, Ben McNeil and, um, Lenny? Because they were among the people that should have been, that were appointed to be on the ad hoc committee, they're not on the website.
Okay.
Hold on a second, please. Lauren Carson was concerned that she wasn't showing up as a member of the solid waste committee.
I added her, um.
Oh, okay, she's okay.
I think I fixed it.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Nothing else? Good. Okay, unfinished business. Curbside collection Archie's.
So he never called me, did he say he was gonna?
Yeah.
Did he give any indication if he's coming tonight?
Yeah, he said he was.
Sweet.
Guess we get lost.
So, where do we go from here? You know my stance, I tried to do a last meeting, but we don't have anything we can take this time.
Well, we read the contract, and it says you can withhold payment if you have to hire someone to do the job that they didn't do.
Okay.
But they still haven't provided a route?
Yeah, they didn't do it, so should I, can I hire someone to provide us a route?
Well, they did provide a route.
But it's not accurate, it's nowhere near accurate, because it says they start on Main Street, and they're not starting there. And they drove up a road, Mr. Tiff, do you want to tell us a story?
Well, this morning, I had to go cook my duck up my garbage house. Surprised, Tuesday morning, but I'm off my shed, and I've got a computer out there, and I'm working. It's been a morning, and I hear this truck coming up the hill, I'm like, feel dry. And I say, oh.
Private road.
Think I better look out the window, and there he is, going up the hill, and there's only a turnaround up here, so I knew he's got a quick there to turn around, so I hurried out, got the garbage, and I'm up, he's still by the road, and stopped, and let me put it in, well, come to find out, I don't know, I just wanted to hear what they, they had to say. So there's two guys in there, and I said, how long you been working here, you're coming up the hill here? He said, well, this is our first day, both of them, both of them. And I said, uh, are you gonna be coming up this road every week? And he said, I'm not, I don't know, right now, we don't know where we're going. All we're supposed to do is drive around Hartford, pick up garbage, no route, no nothing. And I, I found out this morning, nothing.
Which confirms my suspicions.
Yeah. Two guys just started work, and, you know, they don't know what they're doing.
At least they picked up the trash, but.
Well, it is.
I believe that myself.
Yeah, it's very consistent.
Yeah.
So, I, I can't keep pushing this down the road, I'm getting messages every week on my phone, whether it's texts, Facebook, emails, and I keep telling people I'm working on, I told them I'd have him here this week, he's not here, what do you want to do?
I'd say we withhold from here on out.
There's nothing to withhold this week.
Right, not this week.
So we're pushing it down the road another two weeks.
What more can we do without having a check in our hand that we withhold?
I have no idea.
I know. There's nobody else.
Everyone not feeling, we kind of have an issue.
Yeah. Wonder how they do it, rumpus.
Leanne's here, question.
Leanne? I do have to say, for a year ending June thirtieth, we did over budget a tiny bit, but our bulky waste bill was way below what we budgeted for, even though it took an extra month. So, one point.
That's probably because they didn't know whose is whose, they probably get someone else when we get charged for our stuff.
Go ahead, Jeremy.
Have you written a letter to them to tell them that you're gonna withhold funds if they didn't?
A month ago.
I did write a letter, I didn't know if you stated that.
I did, and I, I wanted to withhold the check last time, but. Here we are.
The only way to do that would be to not have it on the warrant, right, Leanne?
No.
No, you can pull the check out. Just have one check and do the rest of the warrant.
But I don't know if it's right if we, because the contract says if we have to pay someone else to do the job.
He does it, but just don't know when.
But he doesn't, he's reaching the first line, the, the line that says he has to provide a route of collection approved by the board of Sluggins, he hasn't done that.
I believe it said with a schedule, too, like an estimated time of arrival.
I suggest you send the contract MMA, make start with MMA, and ask their opinion, and if, you know, I know they're always wishing, watching.
They are.
But maybe even spend a few bucks on the town attorney, it shouldn't take that long for them to read the, read the contract and give this opinion.
I, I, okay.
It would be beneficial.
I like that, I like, I like the idea of skipping MMA, because Dave is right, every time I've contacted them in the past, since I've been on the board, they give you right to the point of an answer, and then when it comes time to make a decision, it's a big cloud of mess, so.
Wait, no, do it today.
I'll make a motion to send the contract to the town attorney, have him look over it, and see what legal avenues we have.
I second that.
You're on favor. You can glue that route, see what happens.
Good question out there.
Peggy?
While you were discussing that, I asked AI to create a route for Hartford, which was forty-nine point five miles, divided into three segments, and to do an eight-hour stay with one truck. I've, I've gotten it in light.
Maybe I'll have you ride around with us.
Yeah, there are. Go volunteer your services with Archie's, maybe, huh?
Problem solved.
Okay, use of town recreation field and beach nine five. Twenty twenty-five?
It's getting reschedule anyways.
Is it? What?
Almost time to do the September retreat, or activity.
Not happening?
No, it's just right on Friday.
Oh, oh, gotcha. Okay.
It's supposed to be followed on Sunday.
Well, we can make a motion.
Yeah, I was gonna say that.
I make a motion to allow them to do it on any date that they need to do within the next fifteen days, days of rains again.
Okay, wait, wait, this is a motion, so say exactly what you.
Well, they can do it on Wednesday, you're not doing it Friday. I guess we'll make a motion to allow them to do it on the following Wednesday.
Do what? Beach day?
Use the beach and the town fields.
I was thinking. You're on favor?
We're no in fees, no insurance, right?
Right.
Is. Will the porta potty be gone by then?
Probably.
Okay.
So that's the tenth. Good. Bridgette, you said you're gonna let them know?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Usertown Hall, 1025 HHS Craft Fair.
What's HHS?
I don't know.
Hartford Heritage Society.
Okay.
Do they do that every year? Do they?
Yeah, in the, yes, they do. In the past, the selectmen have waived the fee to rent the hall, but did provide, require insurance.
Okay, that's my question. I'm good with that. I'll make a motion to waive the fees of the Usertown 1025 pending their insurance.
Second.
You favor? Usertown Hall, RSHU 10 withdrawal committee, and 94 at 6:30.
I'll make a motion to allow the RSU 10 withdrawal committee to use the hall at 6:30 on 94.
Second.
With no fee like we waived last time.
No favor? Usertown Hall Recreation Committee, Hunter Safety. Is that just a meeting or?
Um, just undertaking traditional course.
Is this, that's one day?
It's Wednesday night.
Oh, two days.
And you get materials to take over studying. It's always Saturday.
10:15?
And 10:18.
4:30 and 10:18, 7:30 to 4:00. Okay. And a petition received.
Wait, wait, you gotta vote.
We gotta vote. We make a motion. I make a motion to allow the rec. committee to use the town hall on 10:15 and 10:18.
Second.
You all favor? The petition has been received to withdraw from RSU 10 legal advice.
So, I talked with Cameron this afternoon. They have it on their November election. They just called it a special town meeting in order to make that happen. So, I guess my question, what's the legal advice we're looking for? Because when I read through this paperwork, I think it was line four, step four. So, the petition to withdraw must be approved by a secret ballot. And that was one of the questions I saw in the email. Can we do a secret ballot? Well, it said you have to do a secret ballot.
This is all new to me. You know, the petition says one thing, but evidently the ballot has to say another. And I just, in order to make sure we're doing it perfectly correct.
I get it.
Because I don't think anybody has contacted legal services. They're just kind of reading and going.
Did you guys contact any legal services? So, the other thing that I heard was, um, they're still looking into other options. Because the numbers that we were given were.
Numbers didn't look good.
Yeah, they didn't look good.
We're still looking at other options. Hopefully, it will be an article in the paper on Friday, the Boston Journal, if you have access to it. And there's a big meeting on the 11th of next week at Buckfield High School that Buckfield's man had asked us to have. So, there'll be a lot of people. Hopefully, that will be a lot of answers.
I also heard that the member that, of the Ad-Hoc Committee that presented the numbers has since resigned. Is that true? That's concerning to me as well because that, that numbers can be inflated, make it look more unachievable than it was.
But we are gonna vote on this if you sign this paperwork on November 4th. And then if it's approved, you have to, you have so many steps.
No, I know.
You have to provide a reason why you all want to withdraw and submit to Board of Education and.
You have something, Chad?
Yeah, would, would it be worth pursuing with the attorney? Because I think this could cost.
Oh, yeah.
And somewhere a lot of money.
Well, that's, that's the number that no one seems to know what come up with.
Didn't they, I thought they said once like 40,000.
We had a rough number of $3 million.
That's the payout.
But it's, we're still getting a lot of it, so.
And with the, the goal of pulling out the arts, I mean, really taxes, is that what I'm trying to. And that might not be the best option. The state's looking at this right now. It's a problem across the state. They just published a study in July that they commissioned last year to look at the problem facing the whole state with the funding formula. So, that is something they're actively working on right now to try and correct because it is awful way to set up right now. It really hurts small communities, even like larger communities like Hartford. It really, really, really impacts them negatively. So, they're actively working on that to deal with the problem.
I, I'd like to see some accurate numbers. It was mine, I, like I said, I've only been able to attend one of those meetings. And when I left that meeting, I think there was two more after that one, maybe three. But I thought, I thought from that meeting that it was gonna be brought to the towns to see if they're willing to raise the money to pay for a lawyer.
Yeah, that's what the article's gonna say.
Yeah, okay. So, I agree with what you're saying, Chad. But I think with the towns, the three towns, not saying all majority, but a lot of people have concern from what we witnessed in that school board meeting in Mexico-Rumford by the behavior from the Rumford, Mexico townspeople.
I don't know if you know, but like, they could pull away from us and then we could, then we just, if we make a bunch of.
They could, they could just.
And then we.
They could actively say, "Hey, you know, it's actually, it's a detriment to us."
I heard that rumor.
And they could do that, so. Which would, I mean, yeah, no industry really that helps us all on property tax. So, it's a better trust to get there.
It's already been told it's not gonna save us any money.
By who?
Becky. By her report. That report that you read at one of the meetings.
Yeah.
It's not gonna save us any money even down, down.
Yeah.
They did look at with that, with that option.
But I think, I think the whole, I think they knew that going in. It was more of a local control, wasn't it?
That was the main goal, yeah.
Yeah, not necessarily, but really, local control's kind of out of it. I mean, you, you really, you're, you have to meet the minimum expectations and.
No, I get it.
Educate your kids and stuff. I mean, really, it's been a toss of salaries and basically increases.
How, what's the drop dead date?
Like right now.
For absentee ballots?
Yeah, I think it's 60 days because we have to prepare the ballots. Absentee ballots are available 30 days before the November 4th election. But.
Is there anything, if we do this and the town votes on it November 4th, is it? What does that mean if it votes, if it passes?
Then you have to report to the school board, to the state edu, I started reading through the law.
Commissioner.
You have to create a committee.
Is there any financial obligations though?
Yes. Oh, there'll be one on the ballot to approve money for legal fees and.
On the November 4th ballot?
Mm-hmm. According to what I read in the law and I confirmed it with Buckfield. This is the same article they're using.
I don't think we have enough information because people are gonna ask, you know, I would, I would want to know what's that dollar amount gonna be. And.
But you have a petition. This is, these are draft town meeting warrant, article and a notice of election that I prepared just in case. There's more. For them.
Thank you.
But yeah, but that's why I want to talk to an attorney. I don't, so first.
Can we now put the inflation on the Hartford vote side?
If they sign.
So, how do you, how are you gonna fill that number?
You guys are. That's up to you.
Yeah, see, I don't want to fill that number. I have no idea.
Buckfield put 50,000. They got it from the town of Emden. They had 50,000.
It's a guess. What if it's 100?
I don't know.
Why do you do that?
We only have 38,000 in our legal reserve.
Well, that's my point. I don't know. I think if it was up to me. I say we, we need more information.
That's a fact.
I mean.
But you have a petition out there.
Do we wait till next meeting?
Sounds like my next meeting is too late.
It's too late.
You could always.
You keep saying we have a petition out there. What, so.
We had a petition turned into the town, so we have to act on that.
Well, then we have no choice. We have to do it, we're just saying. We just don't know the dollar amount.
I don't know if it has to be November 4th. I don't know if all towns have to vote on it on the same date.
I would think it do. Huh?
I don't know. I just know they, they wanted it all to be in the.
So, the town meeting, special town meeting warrant, that doesn't have to be signed, be signed until seven days before the actual meeting. You could throw a number in there and sign this, you know, call a secret ballot election. You could always call it off, but we'd have it in place just in case the lawyer says everything's good. And we'll sign this if later on.
As long as we can.
But you also have to have a public media, public hearing, 10 days, at least 10 days before the November 5th.
As long as we have the right to withdraw, the, yeah. I just don't like the idea of me and us putting a number in there.
No, no, and it's not a real number and you're just guessing. That seems really questionable.
Dave, any questions?
Dave?
What's the actual petition say? Can you read that?
Yeah. We, the undersigned, undersigned registered voters of the town of Hartford, Maine, qualified to vote in town affairs. Hereby petition that Hartford Board of Selectmen to initiate the process to withdraw from RSU 10 in accordance, accordance with Maine revised statutes Title 28 Education 1466, withdrawal of a single municipality from a regional school union. And that is correct in the law. And then the law says we must vote by secret ballot on this other article, which doesn't make sense to me because that's not what's on the petition, but that's what the law says.
But it doesn't say anything about any money.
It doesn't. I was just gonna say.
The next one does.
The next one.
That will be on the ballot.
Right, but we wrote that out.
No, that's, well, it's the same one that's in the law, in the law I gave you. And I confirmed it with Buckfield to see what they were doing because I was confused between the two.
Buckfield's doing 50. I wonder what Sumner's doing.
Right.
It's on the second page.
Is it in this, this one?
The second page of the law. Do you have Title 28 Education?
No.
You don't? Oh, here, on the backside. Thought I gave it out to you.
Oh, I do have that. That's in here. I was looking for that paper. Can I see that petition wording again?
Yeah, that should be in your packet too.
Yeah, it probably is. So, let's just tell us to initiate the withdrawal from RSU 10. So.
And form a committee and it's not the actual withdrawal.
Right, but why do I need to put a dollar amount in?
Because it's gonna cost money.
No, no.
No, no.
No, the next step is.
Yeah, the next step.
Create a withdrawal.
Right. I don't understand why.
But you would, I think you'd want to have a lawyer.
Oh, definitely, but.
And I know it says you must vote by secret ballot, but Hartford doesn't have the authority to vote. I just have questions.
We leave no authority to vote secret ballot.
We don't have the authority to vote by secret ballot on a referendum. For election, yes, but not a referendum.
Well, we'd have to call a special.
We don't have any right to vote by a referendum in our ordinances. I just, I just have a much.
So, you had to go to that meeting?
No, I think we need to call a lawyer. Have to call, yeah.
Yeah, and the problem is MMA won't answer it because.
No, I already tried. You tried.
Right.
Either way, that's gonna cost money.
Right, even if it's the lawyers.
It's a pretty specific 22-step process.
No, I know. I'm, I'm reading that. I just don't understand where. I don't understand where this falls here in the 22-step process. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Our ballot question?
Yes.
It's right on the second, in the law, it's in there.
The 22-step process. What, what step would this be? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Oh, it's, it's number, step number two.
Yeah, step two. This article must specify a dollar amount to be raised. I don't know how you do that. I don't know how you do that. Last, the Ad-Hoc Planning Committee for Withdrawal Committee did some research, tell us how much it's gonna cost. And I don't think that happened. Did it?
Okay.
Yeah. So, basically, what I'm doing with town, any justice, throwing a fake number there.
Well, no, and if, if it's not, if we can't actually meet that requirement, I don't see how we can do this.
But, Leanne brings up a good point. It's a signed petition.
Well, the signed petition.
So, how do you, how do you, you can't void it.
You have to act on it.
You have to act on it. So, how do you, what do you do? I don't know. I don't know the correct answer.
I would, I would say sign this. You could always cancel it. Call, call an elec, a referendum election. Let, one of us contact a lawyer and ask some questions and then.
Okay.
Buckfield's added 50,000 to the ballot.
You don't know what Sumner did?
No, I don't know what the department's thinking of the area.
Yeah, they are.
I already talked to him this morning.
Buckfield?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so. We have, if we do sign this, we have to put a number there. And we can just send it to the lawyer and. New for all of us.
What kind of number do you put?
I don't, I think you just put 50,000 and.
I wouldn't put over 38. I don't know what's in our current budget. I know it's not much for legal, but we have 38 in our reserve.
I'm gonna spend all of it, so what, all right.
It's 30?
Yeah, sure. Where's the, um. All right, so I make, I'll make a motion to approve the ballot for the secret election, uh, secret ballot referendum election with the amount of 25,000. Not to exceed, not to exceed 30.
You're sucking it.
Why don't we just?
Go ahead.
Can we just say not to exceed 30 and leave out the 25?
Well, there's two spots in it. It says authorizing withdrawal committee to expend blank and authorize that.
I think it should be the same amount and.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just put 30.
Okay. Okay.
You're sucking it. Don't favor?
So, that being said, do we schedule the hearing now?
Ten days before November fourth, so you don't have to do it now. You still gotta sign the warrant for a special town meeting.
Yeah, okay.
So, would you want to give someone authority to contact the attorney or not?
Yeah, I forgot that. I'm making, um.
Which is gonna eat up some of them.
I know, that's why I said twenty-five originally, but, um.
I'm gonna contact him anyway on the Archie's contract.
I'll make a motion to give Leon permission to contact the town lawyer. On the school withdrawal thing.
Oh, yeah, something. You started and you stopped, started signing.
No. Good.
All right, then I'll suck it.
Suck it? Don't favor?
So, when you, when you have a meeting Thursday?
Thursday.
I can't make that.
There's one next Thursday as well at the high school.
Oh, there is?
What'd you say?
Next Thursday, the eleventh, at the high school. Um, the Slutman from Buckfield asked for a big public meeting and we're going to meet and we hope that the information is available.
Can, can you make sure that you make a point that we need accurate lawyers' numbers because?
Accurate lawyer numbers, like phone numbers or anything?
Well, I mean, we just signed a.
Well, you're gonna have to create a committee if this is approved on November fourth to do the actual work because this is just an ad hoc.
I just feel like.
Right, yeah, we need to be responsible.
Yeah, I just feel like.
Make sure that the townspeople know what they're voting for because right now they think, oh, we're just gonna leave. It's not just that.
Yeah. I just feel like.
There's a lot that goes into it. We can't just say, go vote for this.
That's what, we're gonna have a public hearing.
Hasn't been doing many people going to these meetings.
Should be available at the meeting Thursday plus on the website of Sumner and Buckfield. There's a lot, all the information we have on the websites. And I hope it will be added to ours when the petitions turn up.
Yeah, can you pull that out?
As long as it's un, it's factual and unbiased.
It's just what we mark, so.
I just feel like, back to Richard's point, I feel like what we just signed is a lie, basically. Because I, I just put a fake number to that piece of paper.
Well, that, that's the concern that, you know, the person that's running it, the person that members does this verbatim. And, um, the numbers show that it was gonna cost money and we're still pushing forward with it without having any other real reason to push forward with it. But we've gotta get our lawyers involved to really kinda make sure that we're protecting ourselves too.
You mean the school board with RSU ten? Oh, oh, okay. I didn't know if you were talking as a Hartford citizen or a school board chair.
Yeah, I was talking to Hartford. I don't want, you know, three million dollars, you know, at the least to be split up between a very few people that, you know, be having to carry that extra.
No, the committee wants that either, so I'm hoping.
No, and that's why I was, yeah, okay, let's move on.
Okay, quick claim deed. Derry, Derry?
Can I just make sure I know what I'm asking them?
Yeah.
I'm gonna send them the petition, the article, the town meeting warrant. Um, should I ask them about, about the secret ballot voting, which is obvious, but the money, um, what fee, maybe he would have an idea how.
I don't think he's gonna have an idea what it's gonna cost unless he's done it before. I think the only person that's gonna have an idea is what's it's gonna cost is one of the fourteen lawyers, I think it's fourteen that have withdrawn out of the state rate, that's actually done it. No, I think I think we need to know what the avenues are if it passes or if it gets voted down, then problem solved. But if it passes, what, what's our legal, financial?
Can't improve it, it's real. Went through this, not that long ago. I know, I know, there are those people still around, but.
The person who's on the committee, um, that did the numbers and.
Help him.
He is, um, he works for Dick's Field.
Yeah.
And he lives in Hartford.
Leon, do you know what the lawyer gets per hour?
Oh. Two fifty or three hundred? I don't know.
Oh, that's it?
Quite a bit.
Yeah, I was just kinda curious, it's.
He's struggling.
Huh?
He's struggling.
Yeah, okay, sure. Heads up fast.
Does that give you enough info to proceed?
Yeah, I'll try to get a, a quick turnaround. If we have to change this, maybe we, somebody can call us, emergency Slutman's meeting.
Yep.
So. Well, we can talk about it. So the, the public hearing will be ten days before?
At least ten days before November fourth.
I'm just thinking that us three need to have our docs in a row for that because there's gonna be questions.
And about children.
And I'm not around probably for that, that's what I'm getting at, so.
Okay. You don't want it too far ahead. You want it just right around ten days so people don't forget.
Yeah, see, ten days falls on a Sunday.
So like the twentieth through the twenty-fourth?
Yeah, I wouldn't be here, so, but you guys are more than capable.
You could have it before your twenty-first Slutman's meeting.
It'd have to be, yeah, actually, I'm not here that week. It'd have to be like the sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, or tenth, because I'm going for two weeks after the tenth. So, but they'll be all right. They'll, they'll survive.
I think it says at least ten days, at least ten days before.
We can have.
At least ten days before.
Can be before?
Sorry, we can, we can talk it before that and make sure everyone's on the same page and Nick and Kathy will be fine.
Yeah, we have plenty of time.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on. Quick claim deed. Derry, Derry and Freely. Like Nelson Wright. Nineteen ninety-six, nineteen ninety-seven.
Yep, back when, um, our town clerk left, there was a bunch of liens that were never released. Someone tomorrow they pop up. So this is just to release a couple of old liens.
Okay.
Need a witness?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Can somebody witness?
Mo, more witness?
Don't trip on the boards.
He's even good at pen.
How are you tonight?
Wish I could be better.
You having trouble hearing us?
What, what? Yes, I do. I get it.
I think the witness, he signs on the witness line?
Okay.
Yeah.
What's that, Peggy?
That's a question for you. What's that?
Did you make a decision about, um, the withdrawal and did you have to vote on it?
Yeah, we already did.
Okay.
You got Stella handwriting.
After eighty years.
Just need someone to make a motion also.
Make motion to accept claim deed.
Second.
Derry and Freely, nineteen ninety-six, nineteen ninety-seven.
Second.
Don't favor? Cookstoves, get rid of.
So, we got two out there, um.
Lenny said she wanted one.
She wanted the two footer.
Lenny?
Yeah?
We're talking about the stoves.
I know.
You wanted one?
I'm thinking about it. The small one. It's in grid worky quarter, right?
Yeah.
So, are you giving it to me?
I, what else are we gonna do with them?
Usually you have to pay to dispose of them if the appliance company comes and takes them.
You can pay me to dispose of them.
Saw that coming.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to, um, let Lenny dispose of the two-foot electric range that we don't need anymore.
Second.
Don't favor?
Now, the other one, um.
We do.
Can we, it does.
Mo?
Mo's gonna do it.
Which one is, uh, stated?
The larger one, bigger one.
Bigger one? Is it gas or electric?
Electric.
Electric.
I'm, I'm wondering if I see A M.
Well, actually, my next question was if there's any organizations that would.
Well, somebody else, I, I'm not affiliated with I C A M, but I'm just thinking.
What are they doing with Herbie?
Yeah, I was just thinking.
Herbie.
Okay.
Do gas?
Can you reach out to Dina? And if not, can we reach out to our C A M or some, I don't know who, is there any other ones that?
So, you wanna just make a motion to give it away first come, first served?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to give it away after checking with, um, Dina and see if they need it. And then after that, first come, first served.
Second.
Don't favor?
Has anyone seen the new one? Quite nice. Um, the only thing, Leon, I saw you put a, um, cleaning guide on the back wall. Is there a way to pull that up?
Oh, yeah.
Someone couldn't see it. You mentioned it's amazing.
The electrician's gonna come up the amps down in the box soon. He'll be back soon. He was just here last week talking about it.
It's plugged in. What's it, what's he got on that?
Can you turn the?
He said it's not fifty amps downstairs.
It's not, no, I knew that.
But we have the money from the grant.
Yeah.
Can you turn the electrical plug in?
Yeah, John was mentioning that.
Yeah, of course.
Which is, he thought it looked fine the way it is, but you'd rather have it.
Well, there's probably, knowing, dealing with it daily, there's probably a specific location in the back of that stove that has a knockup that will let that stove be flush against the wall. So may have to move to that, we'll have to compare if we move to that location.
Okay. Is that something simple?
He's not questioning, we should do it.
Okay.
Peggy?
Are you gonna put something?
Well, that was my next, that was my next question. Dave, do you still willing, do you still have a piece of stainless steel you said? No, you don't?
Give it away.
Okay. Yeah, we'll have to look. I, I think we should.
I think we have to show our money in that grant.
We do?
I can check tomorrow, see how much.
Okay. Can you put that on the next agenda as well, so we can talk about it again?
Yeah.
Lenny, Nick said he'd haul that stove down tomorrow for you. Nick said he'd haul that stove down tomorrow for you.
Who's gonna? Oh, well, I, I'm just gonna put it on Facebook. Three, four, six, seven, just go, must go get three parties. Why not?
Sure.
Okay, happy news deadline, nine fifteen, twenty twenty-five?
If you could approve your letter at the next meeting, sixteen, that would be acceptable. But somebody's gonna write it.
Slut newsletter?
Yeah. You did such a great job last night, Kathy. You wanna write another one?
Yeah, I can. Okay. Appointments and vexations.
All right, so I saw two. So I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of a leaseholder from the Budget Committee.
Second.
Don't favor?
And I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Kathy Landry from the comprehensive. Wow, it's actually the ad hoc planning committee.
Second it. Don't favor? Would regret?
Would you regret?
I do know that we have Dave, Dave Bowen would like to be on the Budget Committee, so.
Is there a David code?
Yeah, it's in there. So I'll, I'll make a motion to appoint Dave Bowen to the Budget Committee.
I second that.
Don't favor?
Other than that, I don't think there's any others in here. I've already seen all of them.
Yeah.
After all these resigns, we really need just five to make them.
What's that?
Any of them.
We still need ordinance committee. We still need one of the solid waste. Comprehensive, ad hoc planning committee needs like seven.
I can't hear. What'd you say?
I'm just giving Kathy information.
Okay.
Look, you're saying we need a lot for the committees.
But those are really the only, only three. Do you see any others? You should have another one assigned, don't you? Wasn't it two? Oh, no, just Dave, just Dave, yeah, okay, sorry.
Number two, ad hoc planning committee resigns.
We're ready to do that.
Training, freedom of access.
We can actually pass on that. I called MMA because we were struggling to get, uh, signed up for the other seminar and they told me that this one is actually full, so the news is we were able to get the, get signed up for the other one. But this one is not happening, for this for me, so. I guess you had said there's a, Leon, there was a thing on the web portal where you could check a box and have them invoice you. That's what you advised, but, uh, it wasn't there and I, I chatted with Brittany? I think her name is Brittany. And she said, well, yeah, that's not, that's not right. There's something wrong on their webpage, I guess, I guess.
On their webpage?
On their construction.
Yeah, something about once you got to a certain spot, you were supposed to be able to check a box and have it invoice the town for the trainings and.
I think if you keep going all the way through, it will build it, come to the page where it goes to town.
Once you got to the end that you had to put in a credit card, it wouldn't let you do anything else.
Um, really?
I don't know, so I'm ninety-nine percent certain her name is Brittany and she's, she's asked me to send her a screenshot and I sent it to her and she's like, yeah, there should have been like a checkbox right there. It's not there.
Yeah.
Nothing. So, she signs, I.
But we can reimburse you though.
Well, she signed me up. Well, she signed me up, and she said it would invoice the town, and I said, well, can you see if Aaron Harvey's been signed up for it, and he hadn't been, so we got both of them done.
Okay.
Good, all good.
I do need your, uh, the end of the quarter is.
Okay, yeah.
I need all you paid for.
I'll get that back to you.
Good. Review correspondence.
Okay, do you have anything to add?
If on.
That's next, that's our executive session.
Yeah, I already, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay. Agenda items for the next meeting?
I got a few.
Okay.
Can we get a, add the C and P poll removal, so we can get an update on that, see where. Let's put, what's, you said the windows construction's gonna start. Can you, can you put that on there so we can talk about that?
Close trash.
What's that?
Yeah, so they close trash again.
Yeah, and then the other thing is what we talked about earlier, um, I think we ought to put the hermit lane turnaround in case that, it's been talked about. May not, but I'd rather have it all there in case we do.
Maybe we can have that easement ready by then.
Yeah.
Hope so.
That's all I got.
So we have a public hearing, town meeting warrant. Back lap, back thing for the stove, Hartford news. Archie's contract and RSU ten.
Mr. Nathan has a question.
Mo?
Aaron just mentioned windows, is there a firm commitment when the windows?
Yeah, there was a deadline, I'd have, there was a deadline, I'd have to look to see what it was.
It's end of August, they're past it now. The contract is technically up. That's why I kinda wanted to talk about it, but. How many payments do we pay them?
One.
Yeah.
Just one?
They're supposed to get another ten thousand dollars after a certain point, but.
Be next.
He was in a couple of weeks ago, he came in, I didn't order the windows yet, he was checking the sizes.
Adrian?
Mm-hmm.
That's why they needed the money upfront.
That's what I said.
Hands aside.
Mo?
Did they get money upfront?
Ha, they got, I wanna say like ten grand, I don't remember the exact amount that was around there.
Twenty-six.
Yeah.
Was it that much?
It was more, yeah.
Okay.
Did they give them the whole contract?
No, no.
No.
I think the total contract was fifty-five.
Was there a penalty for not? Finishing it by ending August?
Well, we, that, we delayed it.
We delayed it a week, or two weeks.
Two weeks.
Yeah.
And they've been busy.
But, that doesn't, that doesn't explain why they didn't order the windows. You're right.
Busy.
That's why I.
Is this person still around?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're.
That's why I want it on the next agenda, so we can. Chat.
Okay, now we are going into executive session.
So I'll make a motion to enter executive session pursuant to M R S A one, chapter thirteen, section four, five, six, superior court.
Second that motion.
Don't favor.
Thank you.
Nice.
I want just a little.
Thirty-six.
Straight out in the kitchen.
I'd go like six inches wider.
Three hundred side, six hundred side.
Say four feet.
I would go, I would go.
I have a.
Forty, forty-eight wide, I don't know the tall of us. Probably forty inches tall.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's it, maybe a mile each one of theirs.
Don't do that, don't do that until she gets older.
Done.
Yeah.
Oh, you're gonna give her both?
No, just, just.
Oh, she might want mine.
No, she might want the small, the larger one. You got the smaller one.
Right.
Yeah, but Lenny's talking about something else.
I'm getting rid of mine by saying.
Oh.
I will get mine in.
I got you.
Yours?